All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. It is 7:02. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just.
Adequate notice of this special meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided to tap into Edison and the Home News Tribune and posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex. The reason why we are having this special meeting is so that we can discuss the New Jersey Library Construction Act. As you may know, if you've been following it, it was first discussed in 2017, and it's a great opportunity for us to be able to make improvements to Edison without any implication to taxpayers. So before we get started, I know the mayor gave his address, and I would like to ask Councilwoman Joshi to just speak, address maybe some of the questions that may have come up after that.
Thank you. Yes, the mayor actually spoke about this meeting yesterday during his State of the Township Address, and it was very exciting because this is one of the biggest projects Edison's going to be taking on this year. The frequently asked questions that I got was, one, it's important for everyone to remember that the entire project of what we are trying to propose right now, the entire project, is 100 percent, zero new tax increases. There's no new taxes that will come out of this plan at all whatsoever. That's important to know. The second thing was, this proposed plan is for the North Edison Public Library. This is Phase One of the plan. Phase Two of the plan, which is the main library, is off of Stilton. That plan is going to come later on. We can only apply for one at a time, and that's why this year, we're moving forward with the North Edison Public Library Plan. The numbers and the need fits this library specifically the most, and the ability of what we have, what we can do, were, it just made more sense to go with this one. Secondly, related to the need, I wanted everyone to be aware of how many patrons actually attend. There's, there's a lot of question on why we have, you know, why do we even need libraries anymore? Fair question. Just to give you a count, in 2019, actually in January alone, this one's in. In the, this particular library that we are going to expand, we had 11,342 patrons in the month of January alone. Throughout the entire year, in 2019, we had 154,556 patrons go to and attend the North Edison Public Library. It's one of the most utilized resources that we have in the township. In the month of January alone, we had 49,000 items, approximately 49,000 items borrowed. So, the concept of what we're trying to do right now, and you'll see with the architect as well as when the acting director goes into it, is really look forward to how, the, where the future of the libraries stand. Previously, you know, we, none of us here believe that the future of the libraries 10 years from now is going to be a book depository, which is basically what it is right now. The future of the library is becoming a learning center, a digital learning center, a virtual reality center. Places where not just children, but all ages people can go to learn different types of things. You're going to see this in this presentation. I'm very excited to say that this, this proposal, as well as what the mayor has suggested in his State of the Union, or State of the Township Address, is we're going to have one of the best state of light, state of the art libraries, most advanced in the entire state of New Jersey. It's very exciting. Also, last note, just know that we have the most used library system in the entire state of New Jersey out of municipality, excluding colleges. Our library system in Edison Township is more used with items and patrons than the entire state. So, very excited to, you know, work with everyone, and I know Mr. Nyak is not here. He was very much a part of the, you know, facilities plan, Ms. Rastani along with Pat. We, we worked pretty hard on a lot of things, but I'm looking forward to this meeting and showing everyone what we had worked on.
Thank you very much. Our first item, our agenda item, is to review the proposed building plan so that we have a chance to see the initial concept. And one of the things that I do want to make sure that you realize that what we are going to see is the initial concept. We want to make sure that we do have input from, from the public, from the staff, but this is our initial concept. So.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. Sam, thanks for the opportunity to have us present this design, architectural design. Many thanks to Sam because he brought me to the library, gave me the feedback of how many patrons are attending at the North Edison Library. And he, like any good movie, when there is a good producer, then the director can do it well. So Sam said the northern side of the library has a very good potential, and I will start my presentation with the slides on North Edison Library.
Excuse me, would you do me a favor and just introduce yourself to everyone?
Sure, sure.
Because we haven't really met before.
Okay. Sure. This. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. Okay, good evening, everybody. This is Satyien Raval. I'm an architect licensed in New Jersey and New York. Currently, our firm is licensed for New York, New Jersey, Maryland, and Pennsylvania. Architectural firm based in South Plainfield. Name Sage Arch Architects. So, thank you again, Sam. The library presentation for North Edison, I am doing on a PowerPoint. The first page, it's about the site study, how the library is located. So usually, a person travels about five minutes in a, in a quarter-mile radius, and in our quarter-mile radius, we have a good school, which is JP Stephen. And about 10 minutes for a half a mile radius where our Oak Tree Road and other facilities are. The existing drawings, I was able to get it from the archive, and the site has a space, open space on the northern side. There is about 70 feet in front on the northern side, and on that 70 feet, there are contours. And the contours, meaning the land is sloping on the northern side. So if we consider a finished level of the existing library at 162.66 feet, then somewhere an average contour on that site is 155. That gives a level difference of seven feet. Solar diagram of northern New Jersey and Edison, where you can see that it's, on the west, southern side, it goes to the west, and there is a possibility of expansion on the north. Considering the setbacks right now, existing on site, there is 10 feet side, side setback on Grove and 10 feet on the Liberty Place side. And if we consider the northern side as front, the minimum setback on that is 25 feet. So if I just, let's reduce 75, like if I minus 75, 70 minus 25, you are left with 45 feet. We can easily make an expansion of 45 feet on that direction. So, the next thing is, you can either have a squared or a curved addition. So we are thinking to have a combination of curve and.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So in your proposed, if you go back a slide, I was looking at the site plan, one of the things that North Edison has a huge issue with is parking. We've always had issue with parking. We used to have meetings over there, and I remember because I had to go there like half an hour early if I was to park in the parking. Are we proposing in the site to add parking? Because I see if you come onto the south side, then we have enough space. Our property lines are very far away. Are we adding any more parking in there? Because the way it looks like we could double our parking space, and that would really help because we are adding another what?
So I'll come to the parking in a moment. We can add parking on the, one more lane on the back if required, but there would be, there are heavy contours on the backside, on the southern side. So we'll have to involve site engineer to figure out how many retaining walls, what is cut and fill of the, you know, the sloping site which is there. So at some point, when we go in design development, we will make that note to make sure that we have interior calculation done and the required parking is provided on site.
So can you add it into that right now so we do not miss it later on?
Yeah.
When you have to, when you do a revision of this for submittal, can you make sure that you add that in so we do not miss it later? It goes as a part of the package?
Sure.
Can I request that we let him finish his presentation and then come up with any questions we have? Because maybe he'll fill it in, in the interim. So let him finish his presentation and then.
I was commenting because this was sent earlier, so I.
No, I understand that, but he has a whole presentation to get through. He might answer these questions.
Oh, he might not.
At which, at which point you will ask those questions?
Maybe I can ask as we go along, it's just easier.
Let's continue, let's continue, please.
Okay, I'll continue the proposed addition which we are doing. As I was mentioning, we have 70 feet of space and we are squaring out at 30 feet. And then the curve extends another 12 feet or something, plus minus. So I will show you how the three-dimensional and the elevation studies we have done on the concept of this addition. So if I look from the Grove Avenue side, as you see, there is a seven-foot difference on the northern side. And we can incorporate a concept of sunken sitting amphitheater, which is very inviting to patrons, and, and it is very much inside-outside connection where we have a natural ability of the ground sloping on the northern side. So on the right side, you are seeing the steps of the High Line in New York City, top right and top left. And on the bottom two, there are some libraries and student activities, places which they have implemented this before. So, existing library, proposed first floor where the center portion would be like a sunken sitting amphitheater, which has a double height, so it will be two-story addition. First floor, second floor, sunken sitting, elevators and stairs to go up. The blue area indicates the second floor. And what I'm thinking is, if we use the central access, so if people are, and parking, as Navel was saying, if people are parking, they will come in from that end, and they will be attracted towards the end at this amphitheater location. So we will have more of a central access corridor, furniture layout and all that when we go into the interior design. Right now, this project, we are looking at how the box of the building can expand and how the concept will work in terms of the site. And when we do go on the second phase, we will look into how the interior connections would work with the central access to that location of the amphitheater.
So actually, just a quick question, the proposed double height in the front, would that have access from the top or would have access from the bottom? So we're just having enough space from the first floor down for the amphitheater? Or we're going to have, because the pictures that are there for reference, it looks like they have quite a bit of a height on the staircase?
So elevator, sorry. Staircase and the elevator will connect, the elevator would be ADA compliant, accessible, and.
I'm talking about the amphitheater kind of concept that you have presented with the staircases.
No, amphitheater is just, I will show you a section in a moment. When we go on the section, it will give you an idea. Does amphitheater is at, only at the first floor, and you gradually go down like seven feet? So that steps which you are looking at, the amphitheater is not connecting the second floor. In order to go to the second floor, one has to go take the elevator or the staircase.
So it's seven feet deep, and how, how out would it be? How many steps are we looking at?
So each step, I'll, the math which I have done is that, taken each step, if you look at this slide of the, this picture, on the bottom right, right? Each step, on the bottom right is a construction going on, right? Each step is six inch high, one feet tread. So there are three steps, three treads makes it 10, three feet wide platform. And then each of them is compliant by code to rise at six inch. So if I divide the seven feet into six inch.
No, I'm not talking about the ADA compliant staircases. I'm talking about the sitting area.
Correct. So I'm coming to this, how, how many would it be there, right? That's what your question is. So, six inch is one step. If I have three step for one sitting, it's one foot six. So seven foot divided by one foot six, whatever number it comes to, we will take an even number. That many, that many sitting arrangements would be there.
I have a question on this, this one. So this one is on the Grove Avenue side, right? Sunken sitting and amphitheater?
Yeah.
So, you know, like that side, there is a lot of traffic, so if we have this sitting, this kind of sitting there, is that inside or outdoor?
I'll show you in a plan. I will zoom into the plan and show you that how the accessible area is clear, the circulation is clear, egress is clear, apart from the sitting area. So sitting area is more like dormant, while the egress and clearances and wheelchair access and all that is on the two sides. So when there's a curve on the two sides, you can easily come down with wheelchair access. And then in the middle, there are steps where you can climb up. And so on two side, I mean, I'll go in the plan. Let me go over there. Okay, we was at this slide, and I was going to go. Let me go to this. See, if you see this existing library on the top and proposed on the bottom, the steps are right in the middle. So you can climb the steps up and down, while you can have the seating arrangement on the left and right. In this diagram, I have not shown the ramps on the two sides in this, because in this model, the ramps are missing. But there will be accessible ramps on the two sides where you can easily come down seven feet from the wheelchair access. Did I answer a question? Yeah, okay.
Actually, we're going to get only four ramps, sitting ramps, right? Pretty much. The way it is right now, we get like 4.6, so we're going to get hardly like four sitting ramps. Would it be possible to just bring it up a little bit higher to the second floor? Then it, it'll give you the depth, the picture that we are looking at, that effect will really come.
We don't want to give too much because what will happen is, if we start from the second floor, the second floor, I'll give you, let me see if I have a section right here. Okay. So this, if I, right now, the first floor is, height is nine foot six for the ceiling height. And the second floor height is almost like 12 foot, 12 foot three inches. So if I start increasing the steps, in order to, to add 12 feet to those steps, it's going to be too much. And then everybody has to go all the way to the second floor to get that feeling. So it becomes very tough unless we get more space in the front. So we are having a constraint of the site versus.
This is just a suggestion. Right now, you have that open space in the front, right? How about we bring the sitting ramps right up to four feet?
Excuse me.
Four feet from the window.
Could we just finish with the presentation? Let's, let's, let's have him finish with the presentation and then we can.
You don't want me to ask any questions, Pat?
No, I want you to ask questions, but I would like, because now, we would have seen this through as he continued with the presentation. So let's look at it first, and I want everybody to, we keep in mind that this is an initial concept. This is not like the final plan. I'm sure we will have suggestions to give, but I think it would be helpful if we see the whole presentation first.
I'm sorry, I've been to so many presentations. I think I rarely see a presentation that's, you have to have the speaker finish all the presentation before any question was asked. Usually, it's much easier to ask the question on the way, along the way, because then we won't forget what the question is, and he would, if he have, he has to cover it later on, he would just simply say, you know, I'm going to cover it later on. That's just, then, then we just move on. I don't see how is that causing any trouble.
I'm just saying that as the presentation continues, your question may be answered.
Yeah, if that's the case, the speaker just tell us that's going to be covered. I'll be, I'll get there in a moment. Then we just wait. I just don't want anybody to forget about the questions because this is, yeah, it's a pretty numerous question, but it's much easier to ask the question along the way. No, well, then we have to go back to the slide and then flip by flip.
Could we continue?
I've been to thousands of presentations.
Excuse me.
How about we ask the speaker, which way do you prefer?
Chairman, can you ask the, the public? It's not the public comment section right now.
Please, please. Could we, what would you prefer? Would you prefer to do the presentation and then take questions, or have questions as you go along?
By the way, do you have a number for the slide? So in case we have to go back to the slide, then, you know, how do we write down this, this thing when we don't even remember the slide number?
We don't have the material. I mean, ideally, if you can give us material in advance, it'll be much better.
So Madam President, we are here to support this whole thing, right? So every one of you is, is going to vote to make sure that we get where we need to be for the special meeting. That's the reason the special meeting.
Yes, but we're just, we're wasting time.
But at the same time, it's not wasting time if we have any questions, right? It's a, always, the devil is in details. And, and if you look at the grant application, under the grant application, you cannot change it, right? Question number 838.
No, 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 that's not true. This is, all they need for the grant is a concept plan. And anytime we apply for grants, you, you don't do the final design. It's just to get an idea of how much money it's going to cost, because that's what, what you need to apply for the grant.
I was reading that today. If you look at the question 838, it does mention that once you submit it and it gets approved, then anything that you change will have to go through. There's a whole set of forms you have to go for reapproval.
Only if you would change the dollar amount.
No, if you change the plan.
I don't think that's correct.
The dollar amount will get changed with the plan.
I, I don't think that's correct.
This is my opinion. He is familiar, the presenter is familiar with the content.
Yes.
While we are interacting, he gets the feedback.
It's, it's fine, Madam President. If you don't want us to ask any questions, we're fine. We'll just, let's go to the vote so we can move forward with that.
I don't think this is a matter of not asking any questions. It's a matter of, we did receive the material prior to the meeting. I printed it out, I'm looking at it. While he's doing, any questions I have, I'm writing down. We could have made copies of this and just used that to ask questions later on instead of wasting time back and forth arguing over, do we ask questions, do we not ask questions? We should let him present, write your questions down, and then we can go on. We're making this longer than what it has to be.
Okay, let's see if that's going to save time. How do we get back to this slide? We don't have a slide number.
This, on your pages, this must be like, almost like 12th or 14th?
I don't have numbers online.
Okay, so, I can.
I even don't have anything printed out.
I would suggest that if you have a question about the steps, that you just write down or note steps, question.
Next time, can we ask the library director to print us each member a document that we have something to look?
We get it around 12 noon today.
Okay. We can, we can call this as a section, building section. If you wanted to have a section and steps question, then this is a building section This is a 3D of existing and proposed, how the massing model is. I'm almost at the end. This is almost the second last slide. So existing on the top, proposed on the bottom. If we have more like a storefront type of a system, it can have a double height glaze to the double height atrium area, the amphitheater area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we start now?
Now, were there any questions?
Okay, can we go back to the first slide, then walk our way down?
Which.
The slide doesn't have a number, so.
This one?
But actually, let's go back to that step question that I was talking about, so.
Parking, right?
The steps. Parking, you said you're going to include it, right?
Yeah.
You're going to have an updated version on the parking, so going back to the steps.
Parking, just to let you know that parking can be incorporated, but it's going to be, your money would be going into site, so it's like whether you wanted to spend, because site work with contours, there's a lot of construction costs involved. But yeah, I can.
Right now, we have a huge issue with one of our libraries, that even to the point that half of the board voted over here to shut it down, and the main issue with that library is parking. And that's Clara Barton. So it took us a long time to get it open and everything. I don't want North Edison to have the same thing where we have this beautiful library with 30 parking and then, you know, it's not going anywhere with that.
Sure, sure. We can accommodate.
So, and going back to the sitting ramp arrangement?
So.
So right now, all we're going to have is four. Right, the pictures that I'm looking at.
So we, is, if you look at this diagram, I'll go slowly on this one. See, if you see, what is happening is that we have 70 feet, and that 70-foot corner is a shorter corner, and the contours are between 55 and 62. So seven feet is the level difference. That's where we are showing in this diagram. Now, I wanted to show you this plan. If you see this plan carefully, the first floor plan, you will see that there are steps right in the middle for the six-inch. right in the middle for the six inch riser steps. And then there will be one foot six inch sitting arrangement, which is on the left side and the right side of the steps. Are you with me on that? Okay. And now, what will happen is, we still need to reach at the bottom of the sunken area, right? And wheelchair access, and ADA compliancy, and code, and egress, lot of things which are part of this basics, of this concept. So we have to leave at least three feet of ramp on either sides to make sure we are going at the end of that location. And when, at that location, if you, the steps are, if they are very close to the curve...
No, actually, I think, I think we're, we're going, so right now, if you look at the two, proposed two-story addition, if you go to that slide.
The second slide?
Hang on.
Or the same slide? So in this, okay, so what I'm trying to point out over here, I don't have a pointer, but if you see where this curve is ending on two sides, right? That portion, we need to make sure we have five feet in front of it, because the wheelchair will come in, and it has to take a left turn to go to that location. So that corner is locked in by that much. So that's where my steps are starting. And on the back end, that's where the existing library is, in the brick color. That's the place where we have to keep another five feet for all the wheelchairs to line up if there isn't some accessibility or egress on the top landing. So top landing needs five feet minimum, bottom landing, after the steps, we need five feet of the passageway to go to the curved area. So now, I've limited with front and back, as well as the grade differences, which is on site, unless we dig more or something, or unless we go for... So that is where we got this concept. This is like, very preliminary concept. I got only two weeks to finish my concept, so we can get your feedback, and during the design development, we can put more...
See, the whole idea is, in, in the 20 feet that you have open, right? The more ramp sitting space that we can put in there, that, that is going to be of value.
The steps...
If, after doing all this, are we gonna have only four or, you know, at least, if we're going above 16, 12, 16, then it makes sense.
See, what is happening is, the, the, if you think that the front of the existing building and the proposal, where not, where the curve starts, is 30 feet. So proportionately, that steps, each length of steps on each side, if you see the visual proportion, it's, we are almost getting close to 25 feet length of the sitting arrangement on either side. So close to like 50 feet, you will have, and you'll have five steps. We are not creating like a huge, like, you know, auditorium type of a thing. It's just like, just, within our constraint, that's what we have brought up, you know, this is where we are. If we had option of increasing...
If you have limitations, I understand that, but if you can get more, that would be better, because the, that, that is going to be the selling point of the whole library, right?
Okay.
You can spend a lot of money, but at the end of the day, that's the one that's gonna carry.
Got it, got it.
Because those are the pictures you're showing us, and that's what, the concept that we're trying to sell. So whatever you can do, if we can get like seven, great. If we can get only five, so be it.
Okay. We have, you know, a few more feet to work in the front, so if I have to extend, I'll extend it, and during the design development phase, we'll get feedback for all the members who have, we'll have a live session, share it, and get brainstorming ideas, and improve our design to the next level.
Sue, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Actually, yes. I didn't really see much about the second floor and the sides of the expansion. So can you explain to me, or do you have a picture of what will be happening on the side, the two side expansions, and the upstairs expansion? Will they be rooms? Will they be open space? Is there, I mean, I understand that you're not going to decide how they're utilized, but what will the space itself be?
So, Sam, and we will see more of how the interior concepts are, the programming is going to go on the second floor. We will develop with the team and virtual reality, and there is a few things which Sam has in mind. So we will do that programming, whatever it come. In terms of the space, as you see in blue on the second floor, as soon as you come out from the elevators, either you take an elevator, if, okay, let me see. So, as soon as you take the elevator on the back, or the stairs, you can come up to the whole blue area, which is the second floor. In that, it can be open, if, it all depends on how the virtual reality you need to be, which, you know, how much space you need in terms of whether you wanted to feel the space. Sometimes there are blank walls, and you are looking at it. Sometimes there are models, and there will be a presentation shortly, how virtual reality works. So dimensions of that space, and whether we make it a compartment, or whether it could be an open space, that we will work it out during the design development.
Okay. So, I, no, just one more question, because I didn't realize that the elevator and stairs would be only on the back, left or right, depending on how you're looking at that. There's not going to be another set, or even just a set of stairs on the other side, so someone's going to have to walk all the way around to track them?
I can mirror the elevator and stairs, which is on one side, and instead of having double elevator, I can have mirrored image minutes on the other side, I can have another stair coming down. So for, for ease of, but by egress, and by, you know, we can do that easily. Yes, that's a good point.
I was just thinking, in the terms of safety, if there's an emergency, I mean, I understand that we can't have that many elevators, they take a lot to maintain, and they take a lot of space. But in, in an emergency, whoever's in the back left, I'll call it left for lack of, you know, whoever's in that back left is going to have a heck of a time getting to the elevator or stairs.
Yes, yes. Now, I will definitely incorporate a second stair on the left side, to mirror on whatever it's on this side. So one elevator, two stairs, both, one on each side.
Okay. I think for now, that, that covers my questions.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time.
Fiona, thank you.
David, do you have any questions?
I do have several questions. So I'm trying to figure out the, the new addition to the, how it's integrated to the existing one. Like, what's the, we're going to, with the new addition, we're gonna add more space. I mean, what's the main, because I saw you are going to, there is a roof for the first floor in the existing building, that's gonna be, remain there.
So if you see the blue area, right? That's on the second floor. Almost similar area, you are gonna get it on the first floor as well. I go one step back, right here. So if you see first floor and the second floor, other than the amphitheater area, they both have almost the same amount of square footage which are coming on first floor and second floor.
How many square footage?
It's about 6,000 square feet on the first floor, but when you go on the second floor, because of double height, you're gonna lose some square footage. Overall, square footage is something like 13,600.
I mean, that includes the existing, existing one, right?
No, no addition only. New addition, right now, tentatively from our design.
13,600?
Sorry, 13,600, yes.
Shannon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so you don't need to tear down anything existing, or do you just do...
The way I'm thinking is, I'm gonna use the existing openings, and any opening usually has a lintel. So basically, if you see on this slide, the three windows which are facing the north, they are pretty tall windows. They're almost going from two feet to almost like nine feet, you know, to the ceiling height there. So if I take out that, three windows, I will have an opening to come out from that side. So I'm basically trying to have minimal impact on the existing envelope, and connect the existing to the new, respecting the existing wherever I can. If there is any deformity or any structural insufficiency, then during our design development, our structure engineer will look into it.
Okay. The sitting area, if you could go back a few slide, um, no, okay, yeah, that one. So that's covered, right? Because in this, I...
Yeah. The gray roof which you are looking at it, is basically going on the top of the second floor. So if I have to go to the section, I think I might have a section right before this. Where is my section? Of the steps.
Okay.
Right there. See, the roof is covering the double height as well as the second floor. So it's almost that roof is on the second floor, above the second floor.
Do you need to install anything on the roof? Because the only reason I ask is, I, I thought it might be nice to have like a transparent roof, like a glass roof, make it like sound room sort of thing?
The thing is, we did sun studies, and the initial diagram which I was showing, and when I visited the site, it was, I visited the site in two different times, almost like during the time when around 10, 11 o'clock, and I also visited when the school is completed, Stevens, and, you know, during that time, and where the patrons were. During that time, I saw that the sun movement, it wa, I know that I did it in this season only, but the additional light was not required because of the double height, you are getting enough light, which we are creating. And if necessary, if you see on the second floor level, if we wanted to have some indirect light, we can have movable louvers, which can reduce the glare, and penetrate the light, and natural light, whatever you require. So that way, the light can be controlled. We can always add a skylight, but side skylight has, has pluses and negatives. If it is not done right, there are waterproofing issues and some other things. But yeah, if design development, we'll have more of studies on that, so, you know, natural light versus artificial light, how we do daylight controls, and occupancy sensors, and so on and so forth. So we will keep into that consideration.
Thank you. Also, I don't know, if, if, are you gonna cover the time spent of this whole thing, or the dollar amount spent? Because this is, I'm not seeing that on this document, but maybe there's other document about how long this whole project is gonna take.
So I'm designer, architect professional, so I can speak about the design part. Whoever is bidding for the job, or somebody who is well versed on that, can talk about the construction aspects or the construction costs.
I don't think that's a question that you could answer, because this is just the initial concept. I don't think we're at that point that we would know. Maureen, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the, for the presentation. This is certainly very exciting. A lot that we have to wrap our head around, and I think there is additional information that will be given as well, I believe. Do we have anything else to add? Is anybody listening? Is there something, I think we had, because this is the, this is the concept, and then another company that we have been working with had ideas, some ideas, I believe, of interior.
Interior. So that is one, I'll just give one, keep one slide and have Davis come on here, and he will do the interior. So we did one interior before and after presentation for the Edison Public Library at 340 Plainfield Avenue, nearby Edison Train Station. So on the left is the children's play area, and on the bottom left is the proposed. Same thing on the right is the central access of the admin area, and the bottom right is the central access trying to give a unique central ceiling lighting character to that. And this is where I was talking about, that we will emphasize the central access where it will connect the entrance to the amphitheater. So with that said, I will keep this slide and have Davis to join.
Thank you.
Can you bring the other slide up, please? Your name, sir?
Tamor. Okay. How? Okay, fine. And then, whatever.
And then just, just enter.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamor Davis, the acting director of Orange Public Library, I mean, I'm sorry, of Edison Public Library. First and foremost, let me just go back. The, I have developed a survey back in November, December, because we were meeting with various different space planners in the library. We met with CAD Associates, and we also met with Creative Library Solutions. And they're developing necessary drawings and designs to help advance the library's technology at this point now. In the survey, as you well know, on average, we have up to about 13,000 to 14,000 people coming into North Edison Branch on a monthly basis. And during the afternoon, between the hours of 2:45 and 6, what have you, we have a large amount of teens frequenting our library for resources, tutorials with the parents, and what have you. So we have a large group of people. So I did a survey, asking the students, actually, I asked about 147 students about what they would like to see in terms of lot, of the, in the library, and that we was developing a multi-purpose room in, in the library. The library has a lot of great space, there's a lot of people that would like to come into the library to utilize our resources. So the students answered various questions about being able to create content inside of the library, editing films, if you will, digital animation creation, video editing. Then we had some others also answering, in terms of having a test, a test preparation, job mark interviews, so on and so forth, design, video design and what have you. So there's a lot of platforms that's needed. One of the things that we came up with, was Digital and Virtual Reality Learning Center, whereby we would have computer labs and programs with Final Cut Pro and Adobe, virtual reality with headsets inside of the library, virtual museums that shows history, geography, and digitization of information. We was also considering developing a cafe that's separate from the book area inside of the library, whereby the patrons will be able to have access to beverages while they're actually having meetings and conferences and what have you. And just making sure that the library can utilize this space adequately, so that the patrons that are coming into the library, which is, has a large number of people coming in, they will be able to positively benefit. Sorry, sorry. So this is an example of students in the library that would be able to utilize some aspects of virtual reality. Here's another example of students being able to be engaged in a virtual museum inside of the library, which would help enhance their understandings of history, art, biography, what have you, inside of the Edison Public Library. As was mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that the Edison Public Library is top tier, and in terms of being able to make sure that the students have the right and necessary resources, especially in that we have a great high attitude in terms of our students being able to go to some advanced schools, Ivy League schools and what have you. So that will run neck and neck of what the students are actually receiving inside of the academic institutions and high schools in the area. Here's another example of... I'm just pretty much brainstorming and I want to share the, with the board and the public, some of my ideas in terms of making sure that the library can be number one technology center throughout the state of New Jersey. Shitting. We also was considering multiple screens, which would be touchscreens where people can actually learn, some touchscreens, some libraries have touchscreens that are flat like tables where students as young as toddlers can actually learn computers through touchscreen and what have you. So we want to make sure that our students have access to great information, not just great traditional books or what have you and great programs, but we have great technology that can advance them in, in the global world. Here's an example of students learning about anatomy and physiology from a program that's part of the, some computer programming thing. Here's an example of a cafe, library cafe, it's a nice looking cafe, great furniture. But this is, this is very attractive, and I think that the patrons are dying to have this in their library so that they can have a place to study, relax, brainstorm, think, and what have you. Here's another example of a cafe inside of the library. I think that the library, if you go to your local Barnes and Nobles or any of these type of bookstores, you will see that a cafe runs neck and neck with the people being able to go in and read books and materials before purchase and what have you. And then it gives people a chance to brainstorm, socialize, create new ideas and so on and so forth. And I think that, that goes beyond the tradition of, of a library of just books and programs. We want to be able to help enhance the community in the globe by having people socialize and come up with the great results. Here's some examples. We have some gray space inside the library in terms of meeting rooms, but I think they, we've met with the Creative Library Solutions, they're coming up with some drawings and designs for the library. CAD associates came up with some drawings and designs to make sure that we can enhance the library, beautify the edifices of the library, have great furniture that's welcoming to our patrons at large. And we have, I'm proud to say that, we have over 100,000 people in our community that's really, that's really gung ho about the library and they like where the library is going. So I think that it's only fair to give them a little bit extra to make sure that we can become the number one library, not only in Edison Township, but also in the state of New Jersey. Here's some more additional pictures. So these are just ideas, not, nothing extra stone. We can share and work together to come up with some creative concepts and brainstorm to make sure that we can further the library collectively. Anybody have any questions at this point?
Neville, any questions?
And we're going to pay for all this for the, from the grant, including the construction?
Not necessarily. What happens is, in terms of beautifying the furniture and what have you in the library, unless, if it's a part of the construction project, say for example, if they're doing a space or a room and there's some construction being done, then if there's a rug that's needed, then you can perhaps purchase that. But this is something that I wanted to come up with to let the board, give the help, assist in developing an overall plan for the North Edison Branch Library. It's ideas and.
So you know who's going to pay for this or how are we going to pay for this?
I think that if the board, I think that if, once the plan is properly presented, this is, these are the sketches, I would bring it before the board and ask the board to vote on developing a certain amount appropriation to actually move forward with this project. So all I can do is present and give suggestions, it's up to the board to actually pass a vote to move forward with, making sure that you earmark the proper appropriations for finishing up this project.
So what's your budget on this? What's your?
There's no budget as of yet. There's no complete budget as of yet. We're waiting for the Creative Library Solutions to come up with ideas so that once I have the drawings and everything is in place, then I can present it before the board with the proper numbers.
Would that be a right understanding that what you're presenting right now has nothing to do, or we cannot pretty much use any part of the grant?
Well, it does have something to do, it does have something to do.
This would be on and above the grant money?
No, no. It does have something to do with the factor that we actually are reconstructing the edifice in the library, and we was hoping to reconstruct it in lieu of developing a technology center for the library. So if we look at, if we read the New Jersey Construction Grant Act, I mean, we would understand that they also fund technology as well. So we can actually put that as part of our package in terms of doing the construction because they fund technology as well.
But Neville, I think I agree with what you're saying. You're saying that the pictures that we're seeing are not pictures of the North Edison Branch, they are just ideas.
Yes.
No, well, what I'm saying is, you know, it's great, don't get me wrong, we won the grant, we're going to go for the grant, but spend what we have. We are aiming for too much and we're not going to be able to deliver, I would say, one fourth of this.
But what happens is.
The contents for virtual reality, the museum that you showed that contend would cost you more than a million dollars.
But what I'm, I'm getting ready to make a point. The point that I'm trying to say is that we have an opportunity with this particular grant, or with this bond, to actually include technology as, as advancing the library. We have an opportunity to do that. So I think in addition to doing the construction for the library, we also need to consider the need for technology for our, for our patrons.
I guess I'll leave it to yours and Madam President's better judgment. You guys have done more work. All I know is what I saw today, but if we can accomplish this, great. I'm all for it.
I just want to add, because I did read it and I've spoken to everyone, about 15% to 20% of the total spend that we have can come from the grant that can be used towards the furniture and technology. So 15% to 20% of our total money between, that leaves us a room, that puts us up to 300,000 that can be applied towards this. And these, like I said, and like everyone said, these are just concepts, so we can, the public has input on which ones they feel are vital and not.
Thank you. Sue, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Please, sir. Fiona? David?
I have some questions regarding the cafe there. You mentioned the comparison between Barnes and Noble and the library. I mean, Barnes and Noble is a private company, right? It's, it's private and they have their own cafe which can, you know, go together. How do you think this one in the public library is a tax dollar, you know?
It's interesting that you say that, because what happens is, when we look at capitalism as a whole or business structures as a whole, usually nonprofit organizations, government organizations pretty much follow suit. So if we want to be number one, we have to compete with every entity that exists, whether it's a corporation or what have you. And people are going to Barnes and Nobles because they feel comfortable inside of Barnes and Nobles is welcoming. We have to make sure that our library is welcoming to our patrons where they feel comfortable, because this is the competition right here. Libraries are relevant and libraries should exist. So they're, they're creating an environment where people can come, feel comfortable, they can get some, some coffee or what have you, and at the same time, read a book, and they want to do the same thing at the, at the library. They want to be able to do the same thing. So why not be able to give the.
No, no, I'm, I'm not objecting to the cafe.
Okay, great.
What I'm trying to figure out is that this is going to be a new item, right? The current library, we don't have cafe, and how it's going to work? I mean, how do you plan to get it to work? Because the library is a public supported entity. If there is any, like I say, loss from the cafe, and are we going to use a tax dollar?
No, no. What happens is, right now, we have in our library, Classy Vending, for example. Patrons come into the library, the high school students that come in in the afternoon with Classy Vending. They spend their money inside of our library to buy sodas, snacks or what have you, as soon as they come home from school. On average, from both libraries, we usually get like between both libraries, maybe $450 between both libraries, about maybe $900 a month between the main library and the branches. And the students are coming in, they're coming in from school, they're coming in hungry, they're tired, they have to study, they're waiting for their parents to come. I think it's, I think it's okay, in my opinion, to be able to give them a little extra, because, and even if it's, if there's a cost analysis whereby they may have to spend 50 cent, they may have to spend this, they may have to spend, they're already spending money with Classy Vending at this point now. So why not move forward and give them the best? Because I mean.
I think we all agree, we want to give them the best, but.
Yes, ma'am.
I think David's question is, you know, right now, we are sending stuff through vending machines, right? We don't have, that's unperishable stuff, right? Right now, the students, you said they buy stuff that's, that's from vending machine? Or where do they get the stuff?
The vending machines in the library, if you go into North Edison Branch and you go to your left near the cop machine, the vending machines are right there, the vending machines, the soda machine, and also the snack, snack machines right there. If you go to the main library, as if you're going towards the administration office, when you look to your left, there are vending machines right there.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, this, this is through vending machines, but if you have a real cafe, then you would have real coffee machines, I don't know, donuts or something, that's not unperishable food.
Well, let me just, let me ask, because I think, to clarify, will this be a vending machine based cafe space?
It can be, yes.
I mean, is there, before we worry about employing the people and getting fresh food, are we looking to have fresh food? Are we looking to have like a Dunkin' Donuts type space? So let's like knock it in the weeds on this.
That's why we're asking.
No, it's a, it's a good point. I, my concept of it is that we, the spaces that we currently have, our vending machines, are very limited. We would have, wherever we would have this food, we would have flooring that would not be destroyed, such as carpeting, we would have easy to clean flooring, we would have maybe high tables and stools that students could sit at, and I, I would think that we would start out with vending machines, but I don't think we need to get into that detail right.
Yeah, I'm not asking Dunkin' Donuts to come in.
No, no, I don't think that that's what we're looking for.
Maybe that's not a bad idea, actually, you should outsource it, right? We still get our rent and somebody else will still be able to provide it.
At least that's not taxpayers' money.
Maureen, do you have any questions?
No.
Oh, I have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that you already spoke. Shannon?
Yeah, multiple questions. So this approved, there's like approved grant application, then you mentioned something about bond. So are we applying just for a grant?
No, no, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word. It's a bond, it's not a grant. It's a bond. It's the New Jersey Construction Bond Act.
No, it's a grant.
It's a grant? Okay.
It's just the title.
Yeah, it is a grant, but it is the title, is the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act. But it is a grant, and that's the reason why we're meeting tonight, so that we can approve a resolution to move forward with this grant.
Yeah, I'm happy that we're applying, so first, I mean, if we can get something from the state or from whoever, for Edison residents, that would be great. I just want to know, you know, how much, how much money is this grant? Because I didn't really see anything on this document, numbers, anything, or how much are we applying for?
So what's we applying for, was it 1.3, right? Is it?
Yeah, it's.
1.3.
It's, no, 1.506 was the amount. And yet, it's confusing and a lot of people confuse that because it's called a, the New Jersey Construction Bond Act, but it's not a bond, it's actually a grant. So the state matches one for one, dollar for dollar for what we authorized tonight.
That's great to know. So we're applying for this grant, taxpayer doesn't have to.
Zero. This whole thing, like I said, is going to be zero cost.
And how, what are the chances that we get it approved? Do you know how many cities are applying other than us?
There's a lot of people applying.
It is competitive. They have not really offered a, this grant for a number of years, so it is competitive.
And far as what I'm understanding, that's why it was very important to have a real construction project. I think the plan that the gentleman came up with is considered a real construction project, whereby your chances are greater if you are engaged in a real construction project. And, and that's, you know, that you have to do a real construction project, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I agrees. But we need to get some numbers, like rough estimate for that project that we're doing this.
We'll make sure, I'll make sure I furnish the necessary numbers and the rest estimate for the project and I'll email it to the board members soon as, soon as possible. Soon as I have it, I'll make sure you get it.
Mr. Joshi said that we, this grant, if approved, if we got it, is going to cover, did you say like 20, 30%?
20, 30% of technology. It, it can help cover 20 to 30, 20% of technology. With the construction aspect, the 20% is, it can be used for technology.
20% of the.
Yeah, of the grant, of what's approved. So if you have part of your package, the construction, and then part of the construction package, if you have a technological need, you can include 20% towards tech, technology upgrades in your library as part of the grant.
So to get this magic number, who did we use?
We, we got the estimates based off of the square footage, so it was, the total plan was 13,600 square feet. We use, I think it was $221, between 221 to 225 dollars per square feet. And then we multiplied that number, divided by two, that's the 1.5 that we would be matching and the 1.5 that we're applying for. And the technology component of it, like you said, is 20% of that, which happens to be slightly less than 300,000.
So where, so to apply, we either need project architect, engineer, or what they define as a company, that would be an estimator, licensed estimator. So when are we going to get those? Without those, you'll not be able to apply.
No, we don't need these. I've spoken to the grant writers and I've spoken to.
You, you, you need.
I'm going by their requirements based on the website and the Q and A answers, but they might be wrong, you know better.
But they want estimates in terms of numbers, in terms of finances, measurements, so on and so forth. It gets down to the nuts and bolts when you actually put the, put the, once, once the project is approved, once, then they have to put it out the bid, and once it goes out the bid, then that's when it becomes a bit more intense.
Maybe I'm not clear. When you apply for the loan, for the grant, right? When you apply for it, according to them, you need to give them an estimate, and that estimate has to come from either a project architect, an engineer, or what they define as a company, which is a licensed estimator, right? Are we going to get that when we apply for this?
Yes, we will have.
Yes, we have it.
Okay, and as soon as you get that, you'll be able to give it to the board so we can take a second look at it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and for the authorization, we just needed one estimated number. But the person, the grant writers that we're working with, was our township's Millennium Strategies, and they're, they're also working on this grant with other townships as well. And all the townships that are applying for this are taking the same process that we're taking. So, and another good question that was asked was if, let's just say we apply for the 1.506, so it's a total $3 million project. Out of the 1.5, let's just say the state only gives us a million. We are allowed to revise these plans or not set in stone.
The second, one more question I had for Mr. Timor was, have you taken a far sighted look into how much more, you know, how much more employment we're generating with this? You know, do we have the budget for it? You know, all those good stuff that goes with it?
Let me get back to you on that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yes, sir.
So can you present to us in the next board meeting in March?
Yes, sir.
So just to double check, this 3C, approve matching funds for the grant, that's not fund, that's the front fund from the state, we're not, it's not coming from Edison taxpayer.
No, no, this is coming from the state.
Okay. 3D, approve payments for the architect? What are the numbers that we're approving, the payment for the architect?
I think we're going to hold that until the March meeting.
So we're not, we're striking it out?
Yes, we're not doing that tonight.
Okay.
That wasn't advertised.
Because if we are approving something, I think we need to see the numbers that we're approving, and it's not here.
Yeah, just the. Yes, we're focused on the Construction Bond Act, the grant, that we can, now we have reviewed the proposed building plans, we do want to approve going forward to putting in an application.
And we are applying in for what they call.
approving, and it's not here.
Yeah, just the- Yes, we're focused on the Construction Bond Act, the grant, that we can, now, we have reviewed the proposed building plans, we do want to approve going forward to putting in an application.
And we are applying in for what they call is the fall/winter session, the very first one, March 26th and, right? From that 87.5 million that they're offering in that session.
Yes, I believe the first time applications can be submitted is March 9th.
Yeah, and I think April 26th is the last date.
Last date.
So before that, we'll have the whole application package ready for review.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, sir.
So we can approve everything today with contingency that we get the package before it gets applied.
Yes, sir.
And this is, this money is only going to use for North Edison, we're not doing anything for South Edison Library or Clara Barton?
And that is only be-
I think we did mention earlier that this is phase one. This is phase one, and the reason why the focus is on North Edison is because that seemed to be the location that needed the most space.
And it's the most utilization, which will score us a lot higher, especially the first round.
I have a question on the C, approve matching funds for the grant. That means is that when we apply for the grant, we needed to provide the matching funds.
No, you just have to have authorization for it. You're, you're just, you're just stating that you're going to, at some point, have the matching funds for it.
Yeah, so at some point means that when the grant is approved by the state, we needed to have that money for the, say if we get like 1.5 million, then Edison needed to budget for another 1.5 million.
You have, you have that. You more than have 1.5 million.
No, that's, that's what I'm, what I'm asking. I'm not saying like whether we have it or not. I'm trying to see what this matching fund-
This is just a suggestion?
And the formula.
Yes, yeah.
Just a suggestion, at least, can we put in some money? I don't know how much it's going to be. I know we still have some space left, but can we put in some money so the other libraries at least get a coat of paint and a new carpet?
Sure.
Yeah.
I know we are stepchildren in the South, but get us something.
So I'll, I'll just elaborate more, because this is the most common question that I got after the state of the township yesterday. This plan is only for the purpose of the grant application. The $2 million that we currently have already saved up, we're not exhausting all of that. We're, we're using about half of that towards this project. The other half is phase two, which we can use towards the other libraries. And keep in mind that we're going to get slightly less than half a million dollars from, from the new tax rate of base that we got, but it's, it's the minimum funding that the state requires the township to get.
It's over, it's over half a million.
It's, it's over half a million. So we're going to have an additional over half a million dollars in our account by the end of the year. So we're going to have 2.5 million dollars.
Yeah, and we have, believe me, with the facilities committee, we have started, you know, with the two different companies that we've met with. Actually, we were starting with Main Library with some of the changes that could be made, some of the updates that could be made. So, no, we are not only doing work in North Edison, it's going to be, it's going to be throughout the community.
And we just have to hurry with this because of the time limit.
Yes, that's the focus, that's why we're meeting this special meeting tonight, so that we can, so that we can do that. Moving on to the-
Can I have one more question? Yeah, so what are the total dollar amount for the grant, for the entire state?
It's 125 million, and we're asking for 1.5, which is a very reasonable amount.
Okay, so it's a good chance we can, we can get it.
And it goes, we're allowed to ask for 12 million, but it goes down to the space and usage. So we're being very realistic and very practical, there's not, you know, it's, we're, we're on, we're on the higher side, out of the 125 million, we're asking for the 1.5, we're the fifth largest municipality in the North Edison Library. This particular branch nails all the requirements that go into like the point scale of how they select how much money we get.
Yeah, and I think it is helpful that you're working with Millennium to prepare the grant, you know, and they are working with other, with other communities. But I do have, I do have the, a resolution to approve the grant application, and I can read that. Did you have some?
Yeah, there was just two more parts to this. There was, there's actually a YouTube video. So one, well, I'll just go over this too. When we speak of, wait, go back to this. No, I got it. Yep. Sorry.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So when we speak of virtual reality versus augmented reality and digital reality, all three completely separate things, in case the public doesn't know, this is, this is actually virtual. So the concept is if one, if we have any section, and we can, you know, the public can decide where we do this. The public can decide where it goes within the plans itself, but it, we only need about 10 by 15 square feet for this, and it's just a headset. The headset itself, Oculus goes between 10,000 to 15,000 per set. And this is an example of what you can do. The software, if you look in the left side, you can walk through museums, and on the right side of this, you can actually see the descriptions. So you can walk through an entire Smithsonian museum, the way that Intel has it right now, you can walk through any of the Smithsonian museums right through Edison Library, just like that. And I'm going to show you an example of Google Earth. So you'll be able to, with this, this, we can get through Oculus, it's less than 15,000 as well, just for this unit. Someone would be able to walk in, or someone would be able to use this headset and say they want to go to Italy, Korea, Japan. They can actually zoom in on their headset, and they can go into the country, learn, they can walk through an entire country, or, you know, and walk through everything just through this. And I wanted to show you an example of that, but before, I just want to make sure the sound doesn't go off. I think we need to adjust, right? Yeah, hold on, I gotta fix this. Wait, it's gotta load. One sec. Yeah, just pause it real quick, and then I'll hit it together. Oh. That's not that, that's not that. Yeah. No, this is good. Yeah. So this was one example, like I said, if-
Wait a moment.
Oh. Okay. Actually, leave it, we'll, we'll go to the second one.
Since nearly the beginning of human history, maps have shaped the world we live in and marked important milestones in our-
We'll go to the second one. One second, if you can. Test. Is this on? I'll turn it on. Yes, it works. So the two examples that we just saw is what I want people to be aware of with virtual reality. Like I said, any student or anyone, if you've never been to Alaska, and you want to go Alaska, you can wear the headset, you can go down through Google Earth, you can actually walk through the streets in Alaska, and you'll be there. The other part was an example of, let's just say you're an aspiring artist, and you want to make a design. This is where the future of learning centers are going. You'll be able to use a virtual reality paintbrush, and you can design anything. You can save it on your laptop and your USB, and you can take it home and you can continue. That's also the same thing that Timor was saying earlier, which, if you want it, you know, it, it's important for our students, especially moving into the future, to be able to use things such as Final Cut Pro. People can't, people can't afford, the average person can't afford Final Cut Pro right now, but it is subsidized for government entities, and it's important for, you know, people to have the ability to be able to use it. So where we put this, it's completely up to the public and the trustees, but I just wanted to throw out the concepts. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I, I realize that this was put together, you know, it took a lot of time to put this all together, and I appreciate it. And I just want everybody to realize that one of the reasons that we're meeting tonight is because in the Construction Bond Act, the whole application, there are two required resolutions. And the reason that we're meeting tonight is not only to go over the plan, but to approve these two resolutions. First resolution is the resolution to apply, and I will read it. It's, "The Township of Edison and Edison Public Library Board of Trustees hereby certifies that permission has been granted to apply for the project grant entitled the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act for the purposes described in the application in the amount of 3,060,000. The filing of this application was authorized at the official meeting of the government, governing body of the Edison Public Library held on February 26, 2020." That is the one resolution to apply. I would like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'll second that motion.
This is, but we're going to approve this with one contingency, that we get the final package before it gets applied for, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and yes, I would agree, yes. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so that resolution has passed, the resolution to apply. The second resolution is the certification of matching funds. Whereas the Township of Edison and the Edison Public Library hereby certify that permission has been granted to apply for the project entitled the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act in the amount of 3,060,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Edison Public Library hereby certifies to provide the 50% match for this project to any awarded grant funding through the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Grant Program through its trust, not to exceed 1,530,000 dollars. As such, the government, governing body of the Edison Public Library certifies that we will provide the required, required match funds. The match required for this application was authorized at the official meeting of the governing body of the Edison Township Public Library held today on February 26, 2020. I'd like to make a motion that we-
Can I ask a quick question? On this resolution, do we need to put a date, or like when the matching fund will be available?
No, this is the resolution as taken from the application packet. That's exactly what they want. That's the resolution that they want in our application.
Okay, so I mean, just in case that like, you know, we apply in April or in May, they give us the fund, do we have enough matching like in June?
Yes, yes, we do. But it wouldn't have to be, we would not be paying that amount so quickly.
Okay, I'm just asking this kind of a-
Of course, yeah.
When the legislation approves it in June, and if we award it, then we have to send them the proof of funds. And it could be something as a bank statement.
Right, right.
So we're going to use our treasury fund that we have, and we're going to send it in.
I believe, I believe there's a motion on the floor, we do need a second.
I second.
All right. Now we can have some discussion.
And we are proving this, that we're going to get the estimated costs that are required by, and before we send it in. Okay.
Yes, yes. Any other comments?
I would just appreciate if we can see the resolution before the meeting, because I don't see it.
I'm sorry, what?
The resolution that you are reading, if we can all get a copy of the resolution, it would be much easier for us to read it through, instead of hearing it for the first time now.
Okay, it, it is in the application packet. I don't know whether you had a chance to, to read it, but, but it is in the application packet. But we can make sure, you know what, we can, I'll make sure to email the resolution to everyone, so everybody has a copy of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, all those in favor of passing the resolution, the certification of matching funds for the Edison Public Library?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any, any, I can't even think of the word now.
Any objections?
All those opposed, any opposed? All right, so this resolution has passed. Thank you very much. This is, this is very, very exciting, and hopefully we will receive this grant. Now, I think it's time for public comment.
Welcome to skip the item D?
Yes, I think I mentioned that before. Item D on the agenda was to approve the, the payment for the architect, and I had thought that that was really part of the whole discussion tonight for the construction bond, but actually we need to table that and wait until our general March meeting, our regularly scheduled March meeting, to address that.
Do we have a number? Shouldn't we already have a number before this architect starts?
Yes, I believe we received that number today in the email that Timor had sent out. It was, if you looked, the initial payment for step one is $2,500. So that's what we'll be discussing in March. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment.
I want to go last. Okay, I'll let them go first.
Esther Nemitz, 162 B-Face Street. I just have a question. Will copies of these presentation pictures that were up on the screen, will they be available, especially the layout and the concept and some of the items here? Will that be available to the public in some way? I'd like to have a-
That's a, that's a very good question.
Because it's very hard to see on the screen, and if I go home and look at my TV when it comes on tomorrow night, it's not going to be any easier, but these screens don't show up on the TV well at all.
Right, no, I'm sure that we can make something available, that we can make the-
We'll make sure that the presentations are available on the library's website, on the website.
Okay, but I don't have a computer, I need a physical copy.
And I make sure there's additional copies inside the library, Clara Barton Branch, North Edison Branch, and the main library as well.
Okay, that, that would be helpful. Okay, that would be helpful, because I'd really like to try to make sure that I understand what it is that is being discussed here. And without having something to really look at, I think it would be a little difficult just looking at the screen. And it certainly has been a very interesting evening and I think what you are doing is very important and meritorious and forward-looking. So I will be interested in following the progress that you make as you move forward with this. So thank you again for being willing to apply, given that the grant has been, has a short period that it allows people to, you know, really make this application. I think it's been very, a very good idea, as Timor Davis has expressed, that he would like Edison to be one of the better people in some of the more forward aspects of library usage. So I think that's a good goal. It's a meritorious goal. And I think that there are a lot of students especially that would look forward to that. So I'll be interested in hearing more input from the students also and from the people that are going to have the opportunity to have input with this plan, I assume, as it goes along. Is there a deadline on when you have to be finished with the plan?
Well, the proposed, the initial, the concept has to be ready to be put, to be submitted with the application starting on March 9th, but that does not need to be the complete, you know, in stone plan. So we can continue to ask for input from the public.
All right, but is there a deadline on the in stone plan?
I, well, they're, they're taking applications, they're taking applications from March, March 9th to April 6th. And then I don't recall, I'm sure it's in here, when they are actually going to award the first stage, the first stage of this grant, but I would imagine that we would have some time. Is it June? Do you remember? I don't remember.
Madam President, it's in June. So, April 26th is the last date for everybody to apply. We'll all apply by then. For the first round, that is 87.5 million. And then by June, they will have the list over to the legislative committee.
Well, how final does it have to be, by June? I mean, can you still make changes if you want to, if you're really not, you know?
Within 10%, yes, we can. And then once we are awarded, we can make changes. If it's more than 10%, there's a whole lot of paperwork we have to go through and approvals. And there's, there's, there's way to make changes after the fact too, but it's going to be difficult.
All right, I think one of the things that will be important is that you keep everybody abreast of just what all these deadlines are and how you are meeting them, okay? Because that's going to matter a lot, that, that it's clear that the effort is being put in step by step to meet those deadlines and what the ingredients are that have gone into meeting each one of those deadlines and what kinds of decisions you have specifically made. There have certainly been some interesting ideas presented and as you decide which ones you want to keep and to what extent, or whether you want to make some little changes, I think everybody's going to want to know that and it's going to be important that you keep a deadline and a timeline to put all that out and that you report back. And if you need extra meetings to do it, you know, set extra meeting time as you did tonight to do a special meeting and devote it to keeping everybody abreast. I think this was a very good way to handle this meeting, especially for this purpose. But you might want to do that again, so...
Yes, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
And just to give you a realistic timeline, Esther, funds could be available anywhere from July to October of 2020. And once the funds are available, then, you know, you have one year to finish the construction project or you have to apply for extensions. So although it's very fast-moving, but realistically, you'll not see anything for the next, at least, year and a half, two.
Year, year and a half?
Year and a half to two years, you'll see the progress.
To two years?
Yes.
All right, well, nonetheless, as you go forward, step by step by step, you should be having very definite presentations about just exactly what's being considered, what's not being considered, what you've eliminated, what you've included, you know, all of those things need to be, this is really a great way to start the discussion.
Yes, yes.
And obviously that discussion should continue in, in a way that the public is really kept abreast of how these things are being considered, because it'll give people a chance to come forward if they have ideas that they want to contribute and come to the, to the meetings and at public portions, agree or disagree or come up with other suggestions that they may, may want to see.
Yes, we certainly want the, we certainly want the community to be excited about this.
One of the things that I'm still having a little difficulty with is understanding the physical space. And that's why I need to take a look at the, at the physical copies of this, is to understand the physical space and just what can be done with it. So until I'm totally comfortable with that, I'm going to have some questions. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jerry Shi, now in Finch Court. It's very exciting to see these diagrams. You know, I know where Sam lives and I don't live very far from where he lives. So my kids go to the library all the time for the years they were in the school. So very exciting to see the, the plan be in the, you know, in, in the, in the works. So just a couple of suggestions that we have a lot of flat roof. See if we can look into put solar panels or something like that during the construction so be more environmental friendly. The other things that you both mentioned is that the North Edison Library has been used a lot by the JP kids. So my concern is, I don't know if you have the answer, what kind of interruption is going to be when the construction is, is going on. A lot of kids go there after school. So I don't know if you have any answers. The other thing is, for a lot of these public constructions, you own, you need another 5% to 10%. I forgot the word, overage, just in case for change orders and stuff. So the 3 million that was estimated, does that include that, that extra 5% to 10% or it's, it's additional?
So for, I know exactly what you're saying, for the purpose of the application, we had to show what the amount we're asking of. We have, by the end of the year, we're going to have 2.5 million already in our account. So we're going to have more than a million of room.
Okay.
Obviously, we don't want to use it all towards this, we want to use it towards the other libraries as well, though. So the 1.5 that we're applying for matched with the 1.5. We did have room. There's also square footage space that we've allocated. So let's just say, out of the 1.5, which is a very reasonable amount that we're asking for, we get slightly less, we can actually cut out part, like there's, there's certain areas of that floor plan itself, we can eliminate. So we don't need the 13,000. We could just have 12,000, even 10,000 without it, you know, interrupting the plan itself.
Yeah, so you're 221 or 225, I think that's the per-square footage you're estimating, right?
Yeah, between, I can't remember if it was 221 or 225.
Yeah, some 220 something, right? Yeah, so it's, it's pretty low, so I hope that, you know, the estimation is correct. And the other thing is that, that, you know, it's very exciting for the north side, but let's also present a plan for the south side as well.
So the...
You know, I know you, you are, you are in a rush, you want to get it over with, but, you know, let's also, the folks on the south side to see, you know, what's, what's in the plan for them, right? This is going to be the, the next, you know, two, three years, they're going to see that. But let's give the forward-looking for the south side as well. So that's, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else?
Crystal, Middlesex County. I saw one of the past videos and the library board broke the Open Public Meetings Act and they fired an employee without a rice notice. Do we have a lawyer here today?
No, not today, not at this special meeting.
Okay. Well, I thank David Yee that we have this special meeting, because if, am I correct that if David Yee didn't walk out, the public wouldn't have known about this?
No, that is not correct.
Well, we have, we're having an emergency meeting because David Yee walked out of the closed session, that you guys were going to discuss this during the closed session.
Let me try to clarify that one.
Because you said that at the town hall, David Yee.
Yeah.
Yeah, town council.
Yes.
All right. Sam Joshi, you're racist against the south side. On your Facebook page, you said the north will rise again. Of course, it's a Game of Thrones thing. I like Aya Stark, she had a hit list. But you have something against South Edison, Joshi, and we're all noticing this, I don't like that. There's nothing for South Edison.
I, I, excuse me.
Public comments, I'm allowed to say anything.
Yes, yes.
A Supreme Court ruling.
You're allowed to, yes, but please, if you could...
I didn't say, I didn't say nothing bad. President to Neville Aristani, Neville Aristani, they said it costs 10,000 to 15,000 for the virtual reality. We have that on our phones for free, but at the same time, in five to 10 years, it's going to be a few hundred dollars. Just like the game system, you buy the game system, it's, at first it's 500, 600, it becomes 100. Everything goes down in a few years. You think, you think it's smart to spend 10, 15,000 on, to, I don't think it's smarter. I mean, it will go down. You agree with me, Neville? Neville agrees with me. Thank you for coming to work, Sam, because it was, they said you never come to, why does everyone want to fire David Yee, but he shows up to work more than Sam Joshi at the library board level?
I checked the meeting minutes for last year. For whole year 2019, I attended the meeting 100%. And I think I checked the councilman Joshi's attendance, he's absent, absent 40%.
That's a very poor performance. Very poor.
I, I don't really see the purpose of these comments.
Public comments, Supreme Court ruled, I can, I can, and it is library-related, so I want to shout out to Esther. Thank you for, I like Esther. MC Tony D, what's up, MC Tony D? You did a good thing, the workshop you did at the thing. Shannon, you said you can't be bought or threatened at the, at the town council. I like that. She, she stood her ground, good job. Oh, you said December 10th, you were going to give out the fingerprints, you still haven't given out the fingerprints. Sharik Ahmad bought the stamps for the racial flyers. It was in the newspaper. And when are you going to give us the, oh, about Sharik Ahmad, why are we paying his mom $25 an hour to work part-time? Do we just, we give everybody in the Democratic Party a hookup or just him because he's the head of the Edison Democratic Organization? Because $25 an hour part-time, it seems, you don't have to give me a dirty look over there like you give a dirty look to, to your other board members all the time. This is public comments, I'm able to speak and, I mean, come on. Now, now I understand why some people get up and walk out the meeting sometimes. So can anyone tell me why Sharik Ahmad, the person who sent out the racial flyers, his mom gets $25 an hour? Who, who okayed that? The whole board or who okayed such a salary? Neville, would you like to answer? I know you'll answer. You're going to stay quiet for this one? No? Sam Joshi, would you like to answer? How does Sharik Ahmad's mom get $25 an hour? Part-time? How much does the average employee of the library make, Sam? You going to stay silent? Everybody's going to stay silent on this one? You know, you guys do work for the township, you are supposed to respond back, not, not just to shut people down at the...
You most likely realize that we cannot discuss personnel issues with you.
But you, you had no problem doing that when, when you fired the, the Chinese lady. We pick and choose when, when, when we can talk about personnel matters. Shannon, can you answer some questions for me at least?
Oh, I think that's up to the library director or acting director to answer, because it's a library employee.
Ah, man.
I do believe that you have been speaking for more than six minutes.
I, I don't believe so.
He's got 36 seconds left.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruane. God bless you. I want to shout out Esther, Maria Orchid, I love Maria Orchid, what's up, Jerry Shi, that dude right there, MC Tony D, that lady, that dude. I'm going to skip Sam Joshi because you're racist against South Edison. Have some respect for South Edison, Fox Road represent. Ms. Ruane, we love you. Shannon, we love you. David Yee, free David Yee. We all love you. Ms. Massey, we love you. Ms. Mead, we love you. I don't know you, but we love you. Ms. Kraus, let's, let's be a little bit more pleasant to the people at the podium.
All right, thank you.
Ms., Ms., no, no, I can't forget Ms. O'Neil. A lot of love, Ms. O'Neil. And Neville, what's up Neville? You own a smoke shop, but, but you claim to be against vape and I just want to put that on the record.
All right.
He's real sneaky, that one. Watch, watch.
I would like to have the opportunity to respond to his public comment. First, I mean, as a library, we needed to follow the agenda. I've been accused by the resolution in the city council that because I left the meeting, there is a, one of the agenda was not discussed. But if you look at the agenda for the last meeting, and if you look at the, watch the video, videotape of the last meeting, I left after the closed session and based on the agenda, there is no agenda item after that one. So I was wrongly accused by that resolution in the city council. It's so easy to check that fact. You just look at this agenda published and you look at that videotape on the last meeting, you can get the fact.
I also have, I actually have a question for the board president. Last Friday, David received a letter in mail from the city council attorney asking for his resignation. I'm sorry, can I speak without any interruption? It's Robert Ruhl that I have the floor now, in case you don't know about Robert Ruhl. Anyway, and on Saturday, our board president sent an email to David, the very next day after David received this letter, telling him not to come to the meeting anymore. So I just have a question. At that time, Saturday, within 24 hours, as far as I understand, half of the councilmen, council members doesn't even know about this. Pat, how do you know that, about the content of the letter sent to David? You might answer that?
I can't answer that. I was traveling at the time, so there was a six-hour difference in time. And I was informed that a letter had been sent with the information that you have said. And the only reason I contacted David was so that I was assuming he was going to resign as of Monday and that there would be no need for him to attend the meeting tonight.
I think it's, it's a common sense that before anybody resigned, he is still on that position. And this is your colleague, so even if he didn't, which he, he didn't resign. So you're sending email to him not to come to the meeting. Why is that necessary? If he resigned by Monday, he wouldn't come to the meeting. So I think it's purely as a humiliation purpose.
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not. And I don't believe that...
And I haven't done yet. So I think that's totally non-professional and you owe David an apology.
Is there any other business for this meeting?
Yeah. Yes.
Tony Fisqual, 2 Pine Street. So I do have a question. On the last meeting where Mr. Yee is accused of walking out, was the meeting adjourned? Was there an official adjourning? Okay, so then if there was not, the one I was in for December, when other members walked out along with Mr. Yee, it was also not adjourned. The second meeting was not adjourned, okay? The second meeting was not adjourned, okay? If it wasn't adjourned, there is no reason for Mr. Yee to walk out of the meeting. You don't leave a meeting, can I speak, please? Okay, let me talk and then you can talk, okay? Until a meeting is adjourned in any meeting, I run town halls for CEOs, they don't leave the meeting until the CEO says, "Thank you, I appreciate you coming." Everybody knows the meeting is over. Any official government meeting, until the person running the meeting says it is adjourned, are the members of anybody on that state or anywhere official leaves that meeting. There is no excuse. On the agenda, it doesn't say anything, it doesn't matter. The meeting was not adjourned. The president would have had the right to say anything when you guys came back, even if it was on the agenda. So the excuse of, "Oh, I just didn't, there was nothing else to do in the meeting," no, that doesn't fly. Two meetings where there was no adjournment on those meetings by the president, that, you can't refute that. How do you refute that? Can, can anybody refute that? That you don't leave a meeting, an official meeting, till it is adjourned? If anybody wants to refute that, do it now, because I'd like to know what it...
Are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, can you let me know?
Okay. So if you think you're part of illegal activities, do you think they should continue?
What was illegal?
Okay, this is what I...
The meeting.
Okay, the whole debate on illegal, okay? The first meeting in December, okay? And that whole thing, I know personally, was checked out by law, law lawyers, okay?
Really?
Yeah, I do, I was told that, okay? So that was done. Don't, is this gonna argue back and forth or can I talk?
I'll answer your question.
I do know that, yes.
Do you know there's a lawsuit pending against this board because of that meeting? Because of December meeting?
Is that, why is that? Okay, I don't need to know that.
That's gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I don't need to know all those details.
You'll check with the board.
Why do I need to know all those details? I'm, I'm on the point of...
Well, there's always the details.
I'm on the point of adjournment, okay? You said that there, that you left because the meeting was over, you thought, because the agenda, there was nothing left, that's what you just said.
No.
Okay, you said there was nothing on the agenda.
You didn't understand what I'm saying.
Why did you walk out?
What I'm saying is that there is no agenda item...
Was the meeting adjourned?
And at the end of the closed session, they want to add the agenda.
Repeating the same question.
You're, you're not asking, answering my question, Mr. Yee.
I answered your question.
Was the meeting adjourned by the president?
Because I left because there is a...
Simple yes or no?
No.
Was the meeting adjourned by the president? The answer is no, that's all I'm talking about.
That's because there is an illegal activity inside the closed session.
This is, okay, forget the agenda, my point is to the president is, you know what?
We can all forget the agenda, right?
No, 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 this, this has got to be...
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say what I said for a while, but repeat it and I will walk away. You did not adjourn either meeting, nobody should have left the meeting until you adjourned it, that's the way you officially end it. I'm done.
No, you're absolutely right. Nobody should leave the meeting.
Now, I think I should have the, I should have the chance...
Madam President, can we, can we adjourn the meeting? Because special meeting has to be...
We're still in public comments.
You can, you can first and second that motion.
I got my hand up, privado, three minutes.
That was about me, so I attended that meeting.
Pat, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting.
I have, I have the, I have the right to defend myself for that false accusation.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't second it, don't second with your lectities.
At the end of that closed session...
All those in favor of adjourning this meeting?
At the end of that closed session, there's a, in this closed session...
Now who's, who's walking out of the meeting now?